I'd like to call the regular school board meeting to order is Tuesday, January the ninth, two thousand and twenty. It is now six P. M. Call roll call to my right, the Honorable Carmen Gonzalez, the Honorable Domingo Mingavella, the Honorable Letty Garcia, to my left, the Honorable Mike Farias, the Honorable Robert Pena, Superintendent Schools, Interim Schools, Mr. Garza, myself, Oscar Salinas, and I don't know if Javi's on. No, I don't think so. So we have established a quorum. We'll go to item two, prayer pledge and Texas pledge. Ms. Letty Garcia.
Heavenly Father, as we come to the close of this school year and work toward the beginning of a new year, we pray that our work through the days ahead will be filled with your love and concern for us. Help us always to listen and to care with a heart that is sensitive. Let us be attuned to your word so that each decision we have to make will be all in accordance with thy divine will and the decisions as a board would benefit to all and not just a few. All of this we ask in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three, certification, public notice, Mr. Garza.
Yes, Mr. President, I do certify the agenda was posted as required by Texas Open Meeting Act.
We'll go to item five, Superintendent's report, update of district events.
I just have one item, Mr. President, and I want to thank all the school board for your support and cooperation in, in, with the assistance in putting together the great graduation ceremonies last week. We really appreciate your backing on it. And I also want to thank the parents and the graduates also for their fine participation, behavior, following all the safety guideline requirements as was told to them in writing, as all the principals that send the message out through via mail package to them. Again, the committee, high school principals and staff, and especially also the maintenance and grounds people under the direction of Dr. Salinas and the other administrators that had a lot to do with organizing and planning of the whole event. It was just a very successful event, and I have not heard one negative comment from anybody in the community. So I'm, I'm just happy that we were able to fulfill the request from all the graduates that that's all they wanted to do to put closure to their high school career was, is to have the in-person graduation. And of course, the board made it happen, and we would just thank you for, for having us, having, you know, just supporting us in our endeavor. And the whole community, of course, too.
Yeah, me too. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Garza, administration, all the principals, and everybody that was involved in these last, in our graduation situation. It was awesome to see these young men and young ladies graduate and have an opportunity to spend that time with themselves, with each other and trying to get closure. Like you said, it was a great event. Again, congratulations to the ECISD staff for making it happen, for the parents and the community for as well being supportive and patient with us and having such a great opportunity to graduate the way we have done during this crisis. So I do want to congratulate everybody involved and especially our seniors. Ms. Carmen?
Yes, it, it was quite an event. We had nothing but positives from parents, students, administrators. It was a great effort. It took all of us, and like Ismael said before, it took a village, and we proved that we are a village in Edinburgh. And, but I'm the one to say, I know that these surrounding school districts have had their graduations of the field, but nobody had what it worked out. We are and continue to be number one.
Ms. Vela?
It was a beautiful ceremony, and again, all of us working together to make it happen for our boys and girls. Great job to everybody.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes, great job to Mr. Garza, all the admin staff, and all other staff that participated to make the, the four graduations a success. I know we had a lot of happy students as well as their parents to be able to see their friends and all be there because it's such a great moment of their lives. And I just want to thank everybody. It was awesome.
Mr. Farias?
Thank you. It was a great success. It was very encouraging to see everybody following the rules and being understanding under these circumstances. But it was so special. It was, the nights, you know, they were beautiful. I remember the first night, I was, I was checking out the radar because I saw clouds, and I'm like, oh, Lord, but it all worked out really well. And it, it was just encouraging to see that, that we all, under these circumstances, turned something negative into something positive. And that's going to be a memory that's going to be etched in our, in our minds for a long, long time because it's been thirty years since we had a graduate, a graduation out there. And like they said, some of those parents graduated from that same football field. So something negative got turned around to be something memorable and positive with everybody working together. And it was a beautiful, beautiful moment, all four of them. So thanks again to everyone. So many to mention, but thank you very much for all the hard work. You, you were a blessing to not only the children, but their families and the community to show an example of what we can do, of getting something negative and turning it around for the positive. So thank you very much.
Mr. Pena?
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd, I'd like to thank you, my colleagues on the board, for such a memorable and enjoyable event. Being with, with you in the back room, being with you on stage, y'all make it fun and, and enjoyable. And I want to thank you all, my colleagues, for, for being there throughout this time and for the great decisions that you made on behalf of our school district. Secondly, I want to thank the superintendent and the administrative staff for the hard work that they did in planning of this event, meeting almost daily, and, and meeting to ensure that every aspect or situation that might or could have arisen was covered and taken care of. I want to thank the high schools for their efforts, regardless of the fact that they do this annually, the fact that it was having to be done this year under the current situations, required extra planning and extra effort on their part. And, and the high schools should be recognized as well and their staff for, for the work and enduring through, through these times. And lastly, I'd, I'd like to definitely recognize Mario Salinas and the maintenance department, and Roy Garza, and the athletics staff for having been out there on the field daily sanitizing, cleaning, ensuring that everything was going to be ready for the next day. And they stood out there beforehand in the rain. They stood out there after the rain in the heat. They were out there from morning until night, some of them spending, you know, fifteen, seventeen hours a day making sure that our children were going to get the best experience that they could possibly. And I wouldn't, I would be remiss if I also did not recognize and thank our technology department, our video department, all the folks that worked behind the scenes also to make sure that those at home were going to be able to view this. And, and a special thanks goes out to KRGV Channel Five for teaming up with us and making sure that we were able to, to view this live for the families. And I did get a lot of comments from people that had the opportunity to view this live and enjoying the moment, whether it was with their family or with their friends or people they knew. And, you know, it would be something for us to hopefully be able to do in the future, too, you know, because it just gives a lot of opportunity to a lot of people. So thank you, everybody, for everything.
Also, just the, also the nurses, thank you for the nurses that were there. I know they did a good job in being there.
And the police department.
And the police department. So all of, everybody involved, if we missed you, we, we don't mean to do it on purpose. We just want to thank you and congratulate you for such a great job. Item six, public comments, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir, we do have one. Grant Benham?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Okay. As I continue talking, you may gather I'm not a Valley native, but my family have lived here now for twenty years. My son and daughter have spent their entire primary and secondary school in the ECISD system, and the youngest of them will just be finishing up her senior year this upcoming school year at Robert Vela High School. I'm attending this meeting today because I'm concerned about the lack of transparency with regard to information being provided to parents during these challenging times. The first I learned about the change in the academic calendar was today through a news report I happened to stumble across hours before this board meeting. We've not received an email from the district, and the information we do have is incredibly limited. I think when individuals are living with so much uncertainty, I believe it's incumbent on ECISD to be more forthright in their decisions, reasoning, and plans to mitigate risk. What options are being discussed and what opportunities are there for feedback from parents? The Rio Grande Valley has seen minimal impact from COVID to date, but the numbers are dramatically increasing with an infection rate currently at around one point one four, which is considered high. This meeting is a case in point where members of the board are given the opportunity to video conference to reduce exposure. And as, as I walked into here today, I saw some excellent measures in place to increase social distancing, to make sure people were being checked, temperatures, temperatures were being checked, hand sanitizer readily available. But what's, what's a classroom going to look like come August tenth? It's not, it's not going to look like this. I mean, if it is, great. But I have, I have a strong feeling it's not going to look like this. It seems that the crux of the matter, we're balancing a need for education against the need to protect the health of our children and our families. But I don't think these factors need to be in opposition. Given that classrooms and hallways provide little opportunity for adequate social distancing, is there a possibility for offering students the option of online learning or remote learning? I recognize that some students may benefit more from being in the classroom, but this doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all approach. I personally feel that my, my daughter was the happiest and healthiest I've seen her in high school when she was able to work at home. And I, and I recognize that's not going to be the case for everybody. But I think for some people, we don't necessarily have to think of that as a negative form of education. Some people, I think, thrive in those situations. Rather than rely exclusively on self-reported symptoms, can we implement required temperature checks for students and employees that provide additional and more objective measure? Is the reward system for perfect attendance an appropriate thing to continue to implement post-pandemic? In my mind, this has always been a concern, that it encourages people to perhaps attend when they're sick. And in a situation like this, it seems like a prime example of things that should be reassessed. So I know that you guys are working very hard to think of what to do here. I'm not suggesting there's an easy option, but I am saying that I think making parents aware of what's going on and allowing us to be more involved in the process is, is critical. We're sitting out there very uneasy. School dates changed, at least what, two weeks before, why does this happen? I'm sure there's a reason, but, but what is it? And what is it going to look like when we get to school? What, what possible plans have been put in place or even talked about at this stage? Okay, that's all I have for now. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in the same situation, you know. So, and we're working very hard to try to meet all those demands as a district for all our students and all the community. So, but I thank, I thank the gentleman for, because the more input, the better in this process as we move forward. So that's just me. We'll move on to item seven, consent agenda. I'd like to have a motion for consent agenda A through H. I. I have a motion for approval.
Second.
And the second, discussion. No discussion. All those who favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same side, motion carries. We'll go to action item eight, A, approval of architectural fee, career technology building improvement, Badiantes. I'd like to have a motion.
A move for discussion?
A move for discussion.
Second.
Second, discussion. Ms. Carmen?
I believe the last time this came to the board, there's a concern with the fees. I don't see that there's been a change.
Ms. Gonzalez, she can't hear you.
At the last board meeting, when we tabled this item, we tabled it because apparently there was a concern with the fees, but I see that it hasn't changed. Any explanation as to what we are considering tonight?
For the last few weeks, Mrs. Gonzalez, we've, we've been negotiating the percentage with, with the three, all three items are going to be presented tonight, but we followed the same process for all of them. We do not have a concrete state estimate for the, for the items because of projects. We don't want to disclose the figures, but we know what we needed to do was negotiate with them the percentage that we wanted for, for the architects. We came to the board last week, and we, we know where you're coming from, but the negoti, they started off at a seven, requesting like seven percent, I mean, eight percent. They came down to seven point five. We started off at five and a half. We kept on negotiating back and forth with three different companies. As to last Friday, we were able to settle all three at, we met them halfway at seven percent interest, and we understand why. When you're dealing with old buildings, there are a lot of hidden possibilities that can happen when you start working with that, with those projects. And if you recall in the past, we were getting most of the work done at an eight percent rate. So we worked hard, and last Friday, we still had not come to a, an agreement. So we sent an all-out notice and said, if you don't agree with a seven percent, we're going to just drop you and go on to the next person in line. And, and at that point in time, by Friday afternoon, all three of the gentlemen of the companies agreed to come down to seven percent. And, and that's where we're at right now. So it's seven percent of the estimated cost of the project is what we're going to be working with, with the, with the architects. That's where we're at right now.
And that's for all three?
That's all three. All three of them came down to seven percent. Now, the, the difference in the projects is, is, you know, we, we have more work to do in one project than the other, and it varies, but all three agree to, to meet us at the seven percent rate.
Any further discussion? Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, Mr. President. Ms., Ms. Gonzalez, are you finished, or you want to continue?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I have, first of all, are, is this being, are we having problems with our internet? Are we having problems with it? So this is not being livestreamed right now?
Not right now.
Okay. You guys okay with that, with it not being livestreamed?
It's being recorded. Do you want to, do you want to wait on them?
No, no, I'm asking the board if they're okay with it not being livestreamed. I feel a little uncomfortable because the public out there, it does not know what's going on live.
Okay. Well, can we take a little break?
We can break.
Yes, yes, we need to take a break.
I'd like to recess like we did last time, sir.
Okay. I'd like the motion to recess. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So move.
Motion, second, discussion, no discussion. All those who favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same side, motion carries. We are in recess.
Seems to happen very often. You know that?
The thing about Javi.
The livestream, it seems to happen very often.
No, I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
Yes, because when there's been public comments, it's out. That's what's happened in the past meeting. And things like this, they need to be turned apparent.
And they need to hear it.
Come on, they're the taxpayers.
They need to hear it.
They're the ones that pay all these salaries.
Absolutely. And that's why I said, they need to hear it.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
But you would think they'd be prepared. They have all week.
Yeah.
Correct.
Hi.
Newsstream is the company. Service is the one that's.
Huh? No.
Actually, twenty to one, or twenty-two. The commissioner today opened it up. No, the commissioner. We went to twenty-two to one. Twenty-one kids, one teacher. As long as we have the forty-five square feet within the classroom, and you, we have it. We're already, we're starting to move out furniture and bringing student desks with dividers. We have a plan. No, it's going to be done, but, but I don't think a lot of them are going to show up.
Our group neck. We all.
Put me in, I'll put in twenty bucks.
We all do it. So it's like, hi, let us win. And they have it up. Yeah, because these numbers at the seven percent, they don't add up. Well, based on what was budgeted, and I went back and was looking. Yes, yes. So, and, and it would be nice if we get Mr. Austin to put that up there and then have this addressed. For, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So they're just questions. And so. What was her name? What was the name of the firm? Yeah. But it can be negotiated. Yeah, exactly. Be fair to the others. Yeah. Okay.
Was Letty, wasn't it Laura, Laura something?
Huh? Laura. I don't remember her name.
No, no, forget it.
No.
And I told him, "What?" He goes, "Oh." And I said, "Rudy," and that's not, not, that is correct, but, you know, I figured-
IBM, whatever, service. And Donald.
Donald.
But Robert, what I wanted to-
Oh, okay.
Okay, and, and I'm gonna, I wanna say, because I know tomorrow's gonna be a hard, hard day for all of you. And you, and you-
I don't even worry about it.
Well, and, and so, I want you to know that my doctor said, "Go, you will beat your ass up, you will campaign." So, he's becoming a good politician. Hey, I told him, "Hey, you're learning, Robert, you are learning." And so, anyway, so, Rosetta, se quedo temblando, así Rosetta. I gotta go, go inside us and survey, ma, ma, ma. I swear, we have to stay. So, when I was calling, I said, "It's off, it's off, it's off." Right now, we're gonna, I'm gonna, so, we'll make that decision. You, you decide.
Wait, 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 wait.
No, bye. All right, so, I mean, if you want to, if not, if not, if you don't want to. And then we'll make another, but that later shit, like, you all can- You all can. Everybody.
I've been advised, and it's up to you all, but that it's not probably, we're gonna have a hard time with getting the livestream up. So, we are recording the meeting like if we were in a regular school board meeting, and it will be televised on our, on our station like it usually is. Are we okay to go back and proceed with our meeting? Okay, so I'll have a motion to enter into regular session. A second?
Second.
Discussion, no discussion, all those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're back in regular session. We're going to Ms. Gonzalez on item eight A. On the discussion on that eight A, I'm sorry. I did?
Yes.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm going, Mr. Ferrías.
I just wanted to ask a question concerning a map that is here, uh, appropriate, I'm sorry, as, as about the appropriation of three hundred thousand. That suggests to me that if we're gonna go ahead and pay this individual seven percent, the project's gonna be four point three million dollars. Is that correct?
For letter A?
Yes, 'cause you get four point three.
About four point two or three, yes, you're correct.
Four point two.
Four point two.
Yes, you're correct.
Seven percent is about four point two.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at on this particular project then.
Yeah, let me, good evening, members of the board, superintendent. Those numbers really, if you can remember when we approved the ranking on the agenda items, we were ha- we didn't have the funding for these projects yet. So, that funding would just move from the turf money, the high school turf money, to the fees, and that, we only were able to move a million dollars. So, the amount that's in there really only covers a portion of the- we don't know exactly what the cost's gonna be, but it will cover the first, you know, probably more than half percent, half percentage.
Half of what?
Well, I mean, in other words, if, but, we're estimating it's gonna be five to six million. Seven percent of that is, I believe it's two hundred and eighty, I have it written down here, but we only have three hundred thousand. Or, I think it's three hundred, give me a minute, I got that.
What Robert is saying is that we proportionately moved the funds from the turf projects that we had to a top priority, bigger need, which was, which is the, the Kate buildings, all three of them. So, we, we designated the amount that we had for the filter, instead of using that money for filter, we're gonna use it for this project, which we, in our opinion, is a, is a more, it's a more needy program, project right now. So, we had some figures there, estimated figures, the figures that you see there at three hundred thousand and five hundred, the, all those figures are pretty, just estimates.
They add up to about a million dollars.
They, they add up to a million dollars.
No, 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 I understand that three, the two and the five come up to a million dollars. But my question is, just for full transparency and to know that, that here we are getting these numbers at three hundred thousand, I just want to make sure that number doesn't go up, because we're approving a three hundred thousand dollar approximation at seven percent, but that number could go way up if the project had some costing a lot more than the four point three. And you just said that it was anywhere from how much?
Four twenty, four twenty.
I'm sorry?
Four twenty.
Four twenty?
Yeah.
Four point two.
We, we could see as much as four twenty, yes.
So, really, it's four hundred and twenty instead of three hundred thousand? Is that what you're saying?
And, and that's what we have appropriated at this time.
No, no, but is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so, the reason you put the three hundred was just 'cause it falls within the one million?
No, well, when you add the two hundred for south and the five hundred for-
No, I understand, I understand, but now you're saying four hundred and twenty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at that four hundred and twenty thousand, then what does the project come out to instead of four point three?
Uh, six million.
Six million.
Okay, hold up.
No.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. The percentage is what we're proving tonight. Exactly.
That's correct. We don't have the amount.
You're right.
That's correct.
You're right. Basically, what we, we had a million dollars from the turf, so we re-appropriated those monies, the million dollars, and divided them- So we re-appropriated those monies, the million dollars, and divided them proportionally to the cost, to the estimates that we have from our department. The two, three, and five makes the million dollars. So we re-appropriated those million dollars for this project to get them started and, and to avoid delaying the projects.
Right. So at, at, at a point in the future, these architects, if they're approved tonight, will come back for the cost of the project.
Exactly.
And we would have to approve and find the money for.
Right.
Yes. Just, just to point out a little bit, uh, these architects are gonna do what they, they're gonna review our program for each of the projects. They'll put together, generate a schematic plan, and give us a cost estimate. At that point, perhaps Dr. Morrison will do a presentation on the cost of the construction and all the architect consultancies for that one project to, uh, Barientes, South, and the career at Coler.
Right. And, and if at that time, Robert, if at that time you come to this board with the final.
With the final.
Cost. Then if we don't have the money, uh, do we still owe them seven percent of what they projected the cost would be?
No, no, no. All, all these contracts were based on a percentage, a schematic, uh, design and cost estimate is about maybe twenty-five percent of it total, of the entire seven percent. So twenty-five percent of, say, for instance, if it is four twenty.
We're just paying for what they've done at that point.
That's all you have to pay.
If I may add, uh, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to be very careful with items like these because we're dealing with the tax pain dollars and we need to be very transparent.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess my question is maybe more geared toward, to legal than it would be to Robert, but at, at the end of the day, um, Kevin, my question is, is shouldn't the con, shouldn't the, the, the cost be contingent upon that seven percent and the final cost of construction that is negotiated?
Uh, eventually it is, but there, there, what, what, what you heard is, uh, the, an early, what happens if there's an early bailout? So let's, let's assume the steps legally are, are this. There's a termination provision in architects' contracts, uh, that say you can cancel them, but you have, uh, at the, at the point of cancellation, you have to pay them for the work that they've done. So if you look at the back of an architect's con, standard architect's contract, they take their fee and they divide it into, uh, pieces. Uh, the schematic design phase of a project is essentially twenty to twenty-five percent of the total. So if they came to you with a schematic design, and they will come to you at that time with probably an estimate of that, but it is only an estimate, and you decided it was too expensive, then you would pay them the twenty to twenty-five percent of the estimated cost, uh, for the work they did on the schematic design. Uh, you would not pay them the balance of the amount on the contract. So is twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five percent is seven percent, which is one point something of, of estimate.
Understood, Kevin, and I'm, I'm basing my question off the assumption that we go through with everything. So we go through with everything. We go through with everything. Cost of construction winds up being four point five million instead of four point two million. We pay that percentage based off four point five million, is that correct?
Yes. And so here.
Inversely, then. Inversely, then their contract will also stipulate that if cost of construction was three point eight million, then we would realize a savings and only pay seven percent off three point eight million. Is that correct?
Right. Plus, there's another safeguard in the standard contract, because you're gonna put an estimate in there. So let me explain that. Let's assume that you have, and you will, because every AIA contract has a project budget. So staff and y'all are gonna, before you sign the contract, the board's gonna adopt a kind of an amount for that budget, a target. So let's assume that amount is five million dollars. I'm not saying that's a number, I'm just pulling a number out of a hat. Uh, and so they go out and do schematic design work, and they come back with something that is designed, the estimate is seven million dollars. Uh, and you say, no, we're not gonna pay that much, and we're gonna cancel the contract. You, the, the percentage would not be more than the project budget, the twenty percent of the project budget, no matter how, uh, uh, they proceeded. Uh, so let's take it another step. Let's assume they did the work and they said it was gonna cost five, but then they, uh, got, came back and got bid from contractors and it was seven and a half. And you guys said, uh, cut money out of the project because we only have five and we're not gonna change it, so you need to do some, some work to cut it down. Well, they could not charge you more than the excess budgeted amount unless you told them to proceed. So subject to the budget, in the end, you're gonna pay them, uh, the amount of seven percent times the actual budget, but you are not bound to accept any contractor's price. It's seven percent of the work that, that gets built that you approve. And in the absence of building it, it will be seven percent of the budget. If they do all the work, obviously, they can't do all the work unless you build it. So twenty-five percent is for construction, so if you don't build it, you never pay a hundred percent, but they may pay. The next step after schematic design is design development, which is forty percent. So if you go on to actual design that, you may pay more than twenty-five percent, but not the full cost. Does that explain it?
Okay. Dr. Morrison?
Board members, um, in support of what Ms. Gonzalez was saying, these projects will be funded and paid for by a maintenance tax note, something that Dr. De Los Santos came and presented to you all, because this is the only way we can renovate and make improvements to these three facility sites. We do not have the funds available to proceed with any of these projects without the approval and the passing of a maintenance tax note. With that said, in order for these projects to proceed, Robert Estrada needed funds available, one, to, uh, get the board approval on the percentage to agree on the contract. And if the board did approve that percentage and secure the contract, he needed then to initiate a purchase order to begin the work of what the architects need to do to start designing and drawing the schematics. The only funds we had available at the time, or at this time, to be able to commit to this, in order to be able to do a purchase order, are the available funds within the, the turf account, since the board decided not to proceed. So this turf money, I guess you could say, was being redesignated for this purpose temporarily, and once, and if the board approves the maintenance tax note and it gets funded, we will reimburse the district these funds. So what you're doing tonight is just approving the percentage, but then also approving a, a specified amount to secure so that Robert can initiate a purchase order and commit on the district side for the architects to begin the schematic designs for us. So that we can then bring to you as a board and to our community what it will cost, the projected budget cost, to renovate these three facilities for CTE. And then the board will then put together a maintenance tax note to be able to fulfill those project needs and then move forward with that. So this is just temporary funds that we had available, uh, we redirected, as Mr. Garza said, so that we could proceed with these projects.
I have a discussion. If not, I'd like to close this item, then we're going back to action item A, uh, need a motion for approval.
So move.
Motion, second. I have a second discussion. If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll go to eight B, approval of architect fees for career technology building, South Middle School.
Move for approval.
A motion, second discussion. No discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll go to item eight C, approve architect fees, correct technology, building improvement, have a motion. Second discussion, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll go to item.
Mr. Salina, if I can, uh, have my vote removed on the one on, uh, was it, on eight B?
So your vote was not, you.
Yeah.
Was against. Right. That's why I put you down.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll go to item D, eight D, to approve a contract sum for Monte Cristo Elementary Gym.
Move for approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
How does this price, uh, compare to the projects of the other gyms that have gone through the same renovations?
This, yeah, this pri, this price compares, uh, very close to, uh, Robert Lee and, uh, Freddie Gonzalez, yes.
Good. Okay. Good. Those gyms are beautiful.
Yes. And, and realistically, the decrease amount was primarily, we always ask contractors first, or any consultants, give us your best price, and that's what.
Thank you.
Knocked it off, right off the hat.
I have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll go to item E, A, approval of contract sum for De Lavina Elementary Gym improvements.
Move for approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We are now, I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We're now in closed session. It is seven o'clock. I would like to, um, have a motion to enter into regular session.
So move.
I have a motion, a second discussion, no discussion. All, in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We are now in regular session, it's nine oh nine. For the record, uh, no action was taken on items discussed in closed session. Uh, we'll go to item B, section five five one oh seven four, Personnel Matters, Mr. Gotts.
For special ed supervisor, uh, administration is recommending Cynthia Flores.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a second, I mean, a motion, a second discussion. No discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Recommendation for EA, uh, Robert Vella High School, uh, varsity cross-country coach, Juan Hernandez.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Librarian for Guarena Elementary, administration's recommendation is Sherry Martinez.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Principals for Avila Elementary, recommendation is Ramiro Liao.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Robert Vella for principal, administration's recommendation is Michelle Peña.
Move for approval?
I have a motion, second, but Ms. Vella, a motion from Mrs. Gonzalez. We have discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
For Vision Academy, recommendation from administration is Robert Lopez.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion, a second discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries. We have, um, next one?
For Principal Ed Harwell Middle School, recommendation is Joe Garza.
Ju, move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion, a second discussion. No discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
For Principal at Barrientas Elementary, recommendation from administration is David, Dr. David Montemayor.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion, a second discussion, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
For Principal at Crawford Elementary, recommendation from administration is Denise Vega.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion, a second discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
For Principal at Villarreal Elementary, recommendation from administration is Arminda Ramos.
Move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion, no discussion, all the favor, raise your right hand. All the opposed, same sign, motion carries.
That's all I have for principals, uh. Assistant principals, all levels there.
It would be under.
Okay.
Although, like, anybody.
I also recommend the employment of professional applicants discussed in closed session, subject to assignment for the type and term of contract that's identified for each position. And furthermore, I recommend the employment, reassignments, resignations, and retirements as discussed in closed session.
Move for approval?
At this time, I will abstain.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Vella will be abstaining, I have a, a motion and a second discussion. If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Can I have a motion? Are we done? We're done? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion, a second discussion, if not, no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We are adjourned, thank you. It is nine thirteen.